All right, we got enough here for quorum.
Looks like we have everybody.
Okay, it's 6:01. The regular meeting of Windsor Heights City Council called to order roll call.
Susan Scaries?
Here.
Joseph Jones?
Here.
All right, and Mike LaFredo?
Present.
Mike Jones?
Here.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes, I'm here. I was trying to unmute. Thank you.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? Now we gotta have a second first. Did I hear a second?
Second. We were muted again.
Okay, we're still fighting the unmute.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing nine roll call.
Yes?
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
We have two special guests tonight. Elizabeth Persidy with DART and Greg Edwards of Catch Des Moines. Elizabeth, would you please go first?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to present to you tonight and provide you an update on DART. Also want to thank Councilmember Jones for his leadership on the DART Commission and serving as a great representative for Windsor Heights on DART. And then also appreciate Councilmember LaFredo for her serving as his alternate as well. With me tonight, I also have Russ Trimble, who is the Chair of DART. And so he wanted to open it up and just say a few quick words before we start with the presentation.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As Elizabeth said, I'm Russ Trimble, West Des Moines City Councilman and Chair of DART. I first want to, I want to compliment Elizabeth and the DART team. DART, when compared to like transit agencies across the nation, is one of the most efficient, most effective transit agencies in the country. So kudos to Elizabeth and her staff. We're always working to try to become more efficient, more effective every day. I've been extremely impressed with Elizabeth and her team since serving on the DART Commission. Also, I want to thank Joseph Jones for being a great representative. Really appreciate all of his work on the DART Commission. You know, over the last year or so, in the name of efficiency and effectiveness, we've tried to better align. We've tried to gain better efficiency, effectiveness and efficiency, and we've also tried to better align cost and benefit when working on the funding formula. Some of the things that I want to mention that we've done in the name of efficiency and effectiveness. Transit optimization study. We commissioned a study and we hired a consultant to study innovative and creative ways that we can provide transportation services. This has involved looking at things like Uber and Lyft, as well as Zip Cars, e-bikes, scooters, and a host of other modes of transportation to get people from point A to point B. While we were studying that, we went ahead and we implemented a pilot project in Urbandale that we call the Flex Connect. This pilot project in Urbandale, we basically use Uber and Yellow Cab to do a last mile, first mile for people in a certain zone in Urbandale. Now they can just call Uber or a taxi. And if they're in that zone, the Uber will pick them up directly at their house and will take them to the nearest bus stop. And doing this, we've been able to cut out a bus and a driver in that area. And it's just really been a much more efficient and effective way to move people around in that area. We've also began right sizing our buses. We've got a big fleet of buses, over 100 buses. And, you know, we realized that we don't have to use the big 40-foot buses with an average of maybe 20 passengers per bus. We realized we downsized our buses and save a little bit on cost of buying the bus and a little bit on fuel. While it's not a huge cost savings, the little bit on fuel and a little bit on the buses times a number of different vehicles will add up over time. We've already gone from five 40-foot buses. We've traded those in and we've gotten five 30-foot buses. And we're going to continue to right size that fleet as often as we possibly can. We've also put in place a position review team at DART. In the event that somebody leaves through attrition, Elizabeth and her executive team will get together and discuss whether or not we need to refill that position. If not, we will leave it open. So again, those are just some of the efficiencies that we have worked to achieve at DART, and we're going to continue to work on those in the future. Also, Elizabeth will get into it more, but we've really worked hard to better line cost and benefit through the funding formula. And Elizabeth will get into the details of those funding formulas, but we've had a number of work sessions and we've arrived at a formula that we think is the most fair, most reasonable formula. And we are going to be approving that, I believe, at our next meeting at DART. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Elizabeth, and thank you again for allowing us to be here. Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you, Russ. I appreciate those comments. And so tonight I want to just provide you an update or a preview of the services that you have in Windsor Heights. Talk a little bit more about the transit optimization study that Russ mentioned. Provide you an update on where DART is with its property tax formula update, as well as some discussions we've been having on our operations and maintenance facility, as well as kind of what we are looking at as we think about the future. So as we think about the Windsor Heights service, we have three primary services that DART offers. Our fixed route service, which is your traditional bus service in a, with a schedule and a bus stop. Our van pool program, which serves about 100-mile radius around Des Moines and serving all of central Iowa. Getting people from rural job, rural communities to jobs here in the metro, as well as taking people who live in the metro out to rural employment centers. And then also our paratransit service, which is really focused on people that may have a cognitive or a physical disability and are unable to use the fixed route service, providing mobility options for them. And then when we think about when we're adding service or what our priorities for service are in the metro, it's getting people to jobs, medical appointments, and education. And in Windsor Heights, we have the local Route 3, which services the University Avenue corridor. That is one of our most robust and highest-used routes within the system. That services Windsor Heights. Then we also have our Route 92, which services 63rd Street and Hickman. And then also our paratransit service. And so here's a map of the two of those services, the Route 3, which goes down University Avenue and into the Walmart Shopping Center. We did make a significant investment in that stop a couple of years ago. It was well over $250,000 of investment to provide a better boarding area and waiting area for customers. That was also improved safety at that stop. That is one of our highest boarding and alighting locations outside of the city of Des Moines. And so wanting to make sure that there is a good waiting environment there was important. And then we have also looked forward to working with you as you work to complete your streetscape project on university and being able to incorporate more shelters in through Windsor Heights and potentially art in those shelters as well. And then the Route 92 does serve 63rd Street in Windsor Heights and then also Hickman there through Windsor Heights. So our transit optimization study is really working to optimize our existing service. Identify where we, where and how we can better meet the needs within the region, given that transportation is ever-evolving. We're also wanting to evaluate innovative service delivery models such as microtransit or using, partnering with services like Uber and Lyft, or even looking at some other first and last mile ride hailing type services. And then also working to develop a long-term vision for DART as we look to the future and realizing that our region is growing towards a million people here over the next several years. So what our future might look like is substituting some of our lower productivity or lower ridership routes with other sorts of services. And so thinking again about those first-last-mile approaches, whether there's more partnerships with Uber and Lyft within the metro, or even thinking about how we leverage technology and maybe have a shuttle service of our own that we provide, but using technology to better facilitate that mobility. And then also thinking about mobility hubs and how do all these services come together? And are they best aggregated and within different locations throughout the region? And then also wanting to make sure we're making good investments in our key corridors throughout the metro. And where do we need to put more capacity there? The University Avenue corridor is a great example. It again is our highest ridership route. And so how do we work to improve upon what we already have existing there? So we will be working on this study. We did kick it off last winter, but COVID did put a little bit of a delay on it. And so we are picking it back up in earnest over the, have been picking it up in earnest over this last fall and winter and hope to take the plan and get some general feedback from the public this spring on current and future mobility needs. Work to develop those recommendations over the spring and summer, and then hopefully late summer, early fall. Solicit additional feedback on the recommendations that the plan is proposing with the hopes that we'll be able to bring a recommendation forth to the commission for adoption in the fall of next year. So as Russ mentioned, we are also working to further enhance our fleet and making sure that it is efficient and effective and better matching the vehicle type to the type of service and ridership each route has. And so we did deploy five 30-foot buses this summer. The commission will likely be purchasing some more after the first of the year. And so our hope is to have over 20 30-foot vehicles in our fleet over the next five years. We also put into service, two weeks ago, our electric buses. DART purchased seven electric buses in partnership with Mid-American Energy. They're performing very well in our winter conditions, and we're actually exceeding expectations on the range that those vehicles are getting. And so the pilot will carry on for first. You know, we will be watching in earnest the data and the performance of these vehicles over the next couple of years, such that the commission will then be able to decide kind of what the future holds from a propulsion system and whether we purchase more electric vehicles. We, Russ also mentioned our Flex Connect project in Urbandale. We hope to expand that to a second zone later this spring and summer in the Urbandale Business Park area, replacing another fixed route service that has not done as well with ridership as of late. And then lastly, the commission approved a reduced fare pilot program that will last from January of 2021 through the end of June of 2021. Really focused on streamlining the process for somebody to be able to qualify for a reduced fare and then also expanding the benefit or opportunity to buy a reduced fare pass product or pass products to those that have either food assistance benefits or are receiving unemployment benefits in addition to those that are also seeking job training. So looking forward to getting information and data on that and seeing kind of how we can better tailor our pass products into the future and make sure that we are, have transportation available to those that have financial hardship and experiencing barriers to accessing the bus. So our property tax formula update, which is the primary purpose for our presentation tonight. We have been working on this for well over a year. It actually kicked off last fall with Robert D. and Billy Ray, working with Scott Racker from the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center. The commission had a series of workshops last winter and then working on developing principles for the formula. And then due to COVID, we did have a slight delay, and they have picked it up in earnest this summer and fall. So you'll see here the DART budget for this year. Our budget is $36.9 million. Of the revenues that make up that budget, 62.7% come from local property taxes. Over 21% come from fares and contracts. And then the rest is made up from federal and state funding. On the expense side, the bulk of our expenses are getting the vehicles and service out on the road every day. And so as you would anticipate, over 64% of our expenses come from salaries, wages, and fringes, and then services, fuels and lubricants and equipment and repair parts, all just putting the vehicles out on the road every day. Here is a look at the current property tax levy rates for all of our member communities. You'll see they span from just under 54 cents in Polk County to 95 cents in Windsor Heights and just shy of 95 cents in the city of Des Moines. And so the goals of the Property Tax Formula Initiative were to make sure that the formula meets the regional intent of DART, allows for member communities to continue to find value in maintaining their membership, and provides flexibility for DART to meet the future needs of the community. And so there were a variety of operating goals or operating values that the commission established as it began this work. Probably the most significant is that this initiative really needed to work towards finding consensus, recognizing that the end solution will not likely be a perfect solution for everyone, and that success is coming to agreement on a formula that aligns the cost and benefit to member communities and factors in the importance of regionality and how people travel. And so the principles that were established for the formula is that the formula had to have long-term predict viability. It needed to be, have predictability, transparency, a regional mindset. Equity had to have a base level of support and be creative at the same time. And so with the commission, looked at five primary, five different formula options, and there were different variations based on all five of these. The first was looking at having a flat rate, so everybody paying the same property tax levy rate across the community. The second was having a base buy-in plus a component for service. The third was basing the levy rate totally on population. The fourth was basing the levy rate totally on service. And then the fifth option, which is the one that the commission has gravitated to, is doing an allocation of Des Moines based on the level of service they have that is kind of intrinsic to Des Moines. And then for the other remaining member communities, that allocation would be based on population and service tiers. And so you'll see here how the new formula allocation kind of works. Currently, DART collects 22.46 million in property taxes. And so that is the amount of property tax needed. 49.2% would be allocated to the city of Des Moines. And that 49.2% really represents the service that is intrinsic to Des Moines and itself. Nearly all of our service runs through the city of Des Moines, and a lot of it has a shared benefit to our member community, to our other member communities. And so that 49.2% really isolates kind of the level of service that is intrinsic to Des Moines that doesn't kind of spill over and have a shared benefit with our other member communities. And then that 50.8% gets allocated then by population and service tiers. And so those other service tiers are, the first one being an extensive seven-day-a-week service, which the city of West Des Moines falls in. And then that next tier down would be a limited seven-day-a-week service, and that's the tier that Windsor Heights falls in, along with Altoona. And then the other two tiers are primarily five-day-a-week service. And then the last being limited trips, paratransit, or mobility-on-demand service, or a really low level of service. This graph outlines kind of the percent share that each community currently pays in to the DART levy. Then it also shows what the new formula, what that change would be with the new formula. So you'll see here, the gray bar is the current levy. Windsor Heights currently pays 1% of the total amount of levy collected by DART. It would then move to 0.8% under the new formula. You'll see here that the biggest jump is for the city of Des Moines, and it goes from 35.3% to 49.2%. And then the city of West Des Moines also increases, going from 19.5% to 21.6%. And so the formula is applied by determining the total amount of DART property tax needed. With them, we allocate the dollar amount to the city of Des Moines based on that 49.2%. And then we determine the dollar amount needed for the other communities with allocating 50% based on population and 50% based on the service tier. DART's property tax levy is still capped at 95 cents. So any city that exceeds that 95 cents would have to pay that increment above that from what is levied, unless the state was to change the property tax cap for DART. Given that the change is pretty significant for the city of Des Moines, we did have a lot of discussion with them before we started meeting with other member communities. And one of the, some of the requests from the city of Des Moines is to phase the new formula in over eight years rather than five years, which was our original recommendation. And then also for the DART Commission to think about what the best way to fund DART is for the long term and changing the, and potentially changing the funding source that DART utilizes from property taxes to another one, or finding a way to diversify revenue or supplement property taxes. The city of Des Moines also recognized that this will be a big lift at the legislature. And so in order to give us some time to work through that, the city of Des Moines is willing to support the new formula by buying down their levy for the first three years or paying whatever that increment is above what is levied at the 95 cent rate. So wanting to be a good partner as we move forward. So this is the phase in over the eight years. The first year, the new formula would be 10% of what is the calculation, and then over the eight years gradually move up to 100%. And then this graph shows kind of what the levy rates would do over that eight-year period. The white lines or the clear lines are what the levy rate we would anticipate it to be under the existing formula. The purple lines are what it would be under the new formula. And so you'll see Windsor Heights does fall below that 95 cent levy rate which you are at today. So our next steps are to document the new formula, continue our member community outreach over the next couple of months. And then we would be bringing forth to the commission a decision or a recommendation to approve the new formula in February. And assuming they approve it, it would then get incorporated into our FY '22 budget, which would be brought forth to the commission for approval in March. Any questions on that?
Counsel?
We could, could we be provided the slideshow?
Yep.
Elizabeth, I've kind of been intrigued about the electric buses.
Uh huh.
And what is the cost savings of the electric buses versus the gasoline or whatever they run on, diesel buses?
Um, well, we've, I don't have, I'm trying to remember what we anticipate the diesel savings at. I think it's close to $7,000 or $8,000 a year. But I don't have that number right off the top of my head, so don't quote me on that. But we are anticipating a significant, or a savings in diesel. Those vehicles do cost a lot more than a traditional diesel bus. Almost double the cost, but a lot of the other savings will come in maintenance and other, other, in addition to diesel. The, you know, there aren't as many parts or combustion, you know, type components on an electric bus. It's really one big computer. And so anticipate there being additional savings in addition to the fuel cost.
Yeah, they're much cleaner, the exhaust is much cleaner, obviously, than the old buses. Can you tell me what the range is on the electric buses?
Um, we are, I'm trying to remember what we're getting this week, but I think we're close to 200 miles per charge.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So one of the other projects or considerations that the commission has been having over the last year is around our operations and maintenance facility. And so we currently have our facility at 1100 Dart Way, which is off of Southwest 9th Street behind the BP Station. And that facility is well over 40 years old. It's located in the floodplain. It's landlocked. And all of the major mechanical systems are in need of replacement. They all run, and you'll see in the picture off to the left, they all are installed in tunnels underneath the building. And with any water event, those tunnels fill up with water. You know, the facility was underwater in 93, somewhat underwater in 2008. But whenever there's a high-water event, those tunnels still do fill up with water, even though the facility is levy-protected. It's also undersized from a storage facility standpoint. Our vehicles are getting taller and they're getting wider and are currently, one of our new electric vehicles would not fit in our primary storage building. They're just a little bit too wide and too tall. And so there are a lot of constraints with the facility. And so the commission has been thinking about whether additional capital investment is needed. There are, given the amount of repairs that are needed at our existing facility, is it more prudent to consider a new facility? And so the commission has been evaluating that. They'll be taking that discussion up in earnest after the first of the year. And so just wanted to let you know that that conversation is ongoing and that there hasn't been a decision made, but it will be a topic of discussion as we think about the next, after the first of the year. And so lastly, tonight, I just want to leave you with that we are working to be as efficient and effective as possible and being super responsive to our member communities. And I hope you've seen that through our Property Tax Formula Initiative and the investments that we've been making in Windsor Heights. We're, you know, really looking to find efficiencies and leverage technology whenever possible, continuing to explore sustainable funding options. And then also, you know, how do we best serve the region as we work to grow to a million people? And so thank you for your time this evening. Happy to take any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Counsel, any questions? To Elizabeth or to Russ, or something we can throw in email and get a response back later? Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Russ?
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards? Greg?
Hello there, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing? Haven't seen you in a long time. How you doing? Haven't seen you in a long time.
I know. Where you been? Windsor Heights?
Yep.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I'll try to be brief. But maybe I won't. Maybe I'll go longer than Elizabeth did, but no, I'm just kidding. First off, I would like to congratulate your Citizen of the Year, who is a dear friend to many of us, so Councilman Jones, congratulations on that great honor, Citizen of the Year, Windsor Heights. It's probably about the only good news I have. Travis is sharing my screen here with you all. Get rid of that. So just kicking off here, some, you know, as you all probably are aware, the tourism travel industry was probably the heaviest hurt industry of any during this COVID pandemic that we've been through for almost a full year now. Just some stats, you know, the employment in our industry countrywide, one in ten jobs are related to the travel industry. Here in Polk County, Polk and Dallas Counties both, travel tourism industry employs about twenty one thousand people, of which about fifty percent of those are still jobless or furloughed or what have you. So still, still very, very bad, as I'll show you some stats here shortly. Our budget here at Catch Des Moines was cut fifty four percent for this fiscal year compared to last year. We made immediate changes immediately. We cut twenty five percent of our staff. We cut salaries. We cut incentive programs. Just all kinds of different programs and really pivoted a lot of different strategies and things that the way we did business in the past to how we do business now. Go ahead, the next slide, Travis, please. We did send out our annual year end review. You should have all received this probably sometime in early November or October even, highlighting actually some of the highlights from the fiscal year. And, you know, although I start off with a down note, last fiscal year was really a pretty good year for us as far as bookings. We booked more meetings and conventions and sporting events than we ever have in our history. Unfortunately, a lot of those canceled out. But the positive side too is most of those events do come in in future years, so twenty two, twenty twenty three and beyond. We also were off to a great start for the year up through February. Of course, the Iowa caucuses really helped a lot in bringing in a lot of obviously media attention to the metro area and a lot of revenues as well with press and candidate visits and what have you. So that was a very big positive as well. Go ahead, next slide, Travis. The bad news, since COVID has hit, we've had three hundred and thirty five events canceled or postponed. Events meaning meetings, conventions, sports events. Estimated economic impact of more than two hundred and ninety three million to our local economies. And these are just events that we at Catch Des Moines were responsible for. These were groups that we brought in. This doesn't even take into consideration all the other meetings and activities of, at the hotels and other facilities all throughout the metro. So huge, huge impact, as you can see. Next. Here's our event bookings, as I was talking about early on. We booked three hundred and eighty eight events last year, which was the highest in our history. This year, our board approved our goal to drop, obviously drastically, to book two hundred and twenty events. And we're struggling with that. Quite honestly, we're half, about halfway through the year and worried about twenty five percent of our booking pace where we should be at this point, at least fifty percent. So it's going to be a struggle to make the two twenty. You know, we're just fingers crossed that this vaccine gets things going and gets the economy hopping again. Next, please. We really did make a lot of pivots with our strategies this year. We, you know, we immediately thought that the best thing we can do at this point is really communicate with our partners out there, partners being hotels, restaurants, business, mom and pop shops, attractions, the whole gambit. And we did, we implemented immediately with our hoteliers specifically monthly hotel calls with them, keeping them up to speed with cancellations, what we're hearing in the industry, trends across the country, all those kinds of things, and we continue to do that. We monitored and communicated all different cancellations, whether it be through the event center or the state fairgrounds or any other facilities around the metro. We promoted, along with the Greater Des Moines Partnership, the hashtag DSM Local Challenge. Again, having people support the local businesses, restaurants, et cetera. We initiated a hotel bond program about three or four months ago. We had thirty five of the hotels in the metro participate in that. That was a program you could buy a bond now and later it would increase by fifty, by fifty dollars. So it was a pretty good deal and it helps some cash flow to the hotel industry as well. Started our Support Local Resource Hub, which is still up and running. We still did Des Moines Restaurant Week, which was the end of August, and that's in partnership with the Des Moines Business Record. And that was really a very successful ten day period for the restaurants as well. We've come out with a bunch of new videos. All the new national trends are showing that people still do want to travel somewhat. But when they travel, they want to participate in outdoor activities. So we really promoted the, our water trails, our biking trails, all the outdoor activities. And we continue to do so with things like Brenton Skating Plaza and, and other things to do outdoor activities during the winter months. Next. This is a slide that we watch very carefully. This is the STAR report, which, which is, stands for Smith Travel Research. But this is a national company that monitors hotel occupancies and average daily rates throughout the country that we've subscribed to for years. And you can see the big downturn. We were at a high point as we ended February and really dipped down into April. The red line is the occupancy figure, by the way. The blue line is the average daily rate. And the green line is what is called RevPAR, which is revenue per occupied room, which is really the profit center of a, for a hotel. But you can see the different peaks and valleys. For instance, in July, you see it, you saw a nice little peak. And that was because we were able to bring in a, the Nike Tournament of Champions Basketball Tournament, which was a three week event. It was a girls' basketball tournament, eighth grade through high school. It was actually scheduled to be in Chicago at the McCormick Place. And we got right on the ball when we heard Illinois was closing down and were able to capture that for a three week period. So that was a nice boom. The other high peak is in August, which is, believe it or not, was during the Duratio storm. We peaked a lot during that with people with power outages. And even know that we had people from across the state coming to Des Moines in the metro area and staying in hotels while they were out of power for some of them for weeks at a time. Really see, seeing some big dips now, which we anticipated. November running about thirty percent hotel occupancy. Next, please. This is a weekly STAR report that we also watch carefully. And you can see some real, again, you can see the peaks from the, the basketball tournament this summer from Duratio. And then you see the, the low peak, especially in, in November, which was obviously Thanksgiving week, which is historically a slow time anyway, but, you know, extra, extra slow this year. We anticipate that, you know, December is going to be a real down month, probably running in the twenty percentile occupancies. Next, please. This is another slide that we share with our board, showing you again, the red line, the top, the top chart is ADR, which is average daily rate for hotels. The red line is what's actual from last year. The blue line is what we budgeted this year. And the yellow green line is where we actually are at year to date here. Same thing with the bottom chart, occupancy, red line is last year. Actual, the blue line is budget and the yellow green line is where we actually are at. Fortunately, so far, we budgeted very conservatively this year. And up until now, we are projecting a lower projection for, towards our budget for the first quarter of next year. Because we really, at budget time last March, we thought, gee, by January, we should be through this stuff. But that's certainly, certainly not the case. So we're keeping a real tight eye, close eye on our budget. And we still should be in, in good shape for year end anyway. Next, please. Lot of different sales strategies we put in place. We'd actually formulated what we call our National Planner Advisory Board about a year and a half ago. And this board is made up of national convention planners, sports planners, corporate meeting planners from all over the country. We have a board of about twenty five of those folks that we meet with them periodically. Since the pandemic, we've been meeting with them quarterly, just finding out what's going on in their worlds. What are they doing about meetings? What are they doing about working from home? All those kinds of stats. And it's kind of the same old news, you know, waiting for the vaccine. People are working from home, no scheduled meetings yet. Business travel has been cut still as we, as we speak today, which has been a huge, huge cut to our economy as well. We also keep in touch with our state association business, the, some of the larger ones that we host annually, the Iowa Bankers, Iowa Associate, Iowa Association of School Boards, on and on and on. And keep in constant contact with them as well, finding out what their plans are for next year. Still same old story. Everybody's pretty much still on hold till at least next June. Speaking of next June, that's when we are really hoping, June of twenty one, that things have kicked in by then, because we've got a huge month of June with, kicks off with Principal Charity Classic, followed by World Pork Expo. We have the first Ironman ever in Des Moines scheduled for June of twenty one. We have the National High School, National Junior High School Rodeo Championships out at the fairgrounds, which is about three thousand people in town for about twelve days. Some, some really, really big stuff. So fingers are crossed that this pandemic is on a huge downturn by then. Really staying in front of all of our planners all the time. We've been doing mailings. We keep, we do newsletters to them about every two weeks, keep, keeping them posted on what's going on in Iowa and specifically in our metro area, et cetera. Some of the upcoming events, which now you probably read, the Iowa Pork Congress did get canceled, at least their trade show portion. They're going to have their annual meeting, but that, that was a huge loss for us in January. But some of these other ag shows, U.S. Custom Harvesters, Harvesters, the Iowa Ag Expo, which used to be the Power Farming Show, they're still on the books and they're still, still hoping to pull those off. So we hope so too. Next slide, please. On the marketing side, really had to make some major pivots and, and, you know, taking a lot of our advertising dollars, which we are lacking now, and repositioning those into a lot of digital advertising, social media, a lot of that stuff. And our marketing team's done a really great job of staying out in those markets and, and really our impressions, our website visits and all that are proof that all of that stuff has been working. So, and I'll send you, I don't know if I've sent you this PowerPoint. I'll send you this. I'll send it over to the city manager to make sure you have a copy of this, like to review it. Next slide, please. Just a quick slide on some of the other development happening around the metro. You're probably most familiar with most of these things, the Central Iowa Water Trails. Really got some good steam behind it. Hopefully other, some big news, good news will be coming out on that in the distant future. The largest skate park in the country will open next year. We are already hitting a lot of these companies that do a bunch of these big skateboarding events like Mountain Dew, Monster Drinks, Vans. There's a number of these big companies that are doing huge skateboard tournaments across the country. And they're very interested in talking to us and hopefully lining some stuff up in the future. Of course, the Mid-American Energy Recplex out in West Des Moines will open next year. The USL Soccer Stadium is still, you know, a hope out there, a big hope, as well as the Drake Stadium, Des Moines Public School Stadium. Grimes, you saw recently announced a huge new sports complex development, which will be huge for us. The Johnston Ignite Sports Facility, another nice facility coming into the metro. And then the possibility of the new hockey arena at Merle Hay Mall. All gives us a little positiveness in our lives right now. And the final slide. Bottom line, we still were able to bring in last year over forty seven million dollars in economic impact to the local economies with the events hosted, so not a bad year considering. On that, I'm happy to take questions, comments?
Lot of work, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, any questions for Greg? If not, ship the slides to Dennis and we'll be good to go.
All right. Thank you guys. God bless and happy holidays, everyone.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public forum. Time set aside for comments from public on topics, topics of city business, other than those that are on the agenda. State your name, address for the record, and please no more than five minutes. Travis, do we have any takers?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Hearing none, we will go on to the next item, which is consent agenda, motion to approve.
Tom moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris? Joseph Jones? Mike LaFredo? Mike Jones?
Yes.
Entry for harms.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty zero nine, amending chapter one sixty one of the Court of Ordinances relating to post-construction stormwater management. We've already passed this once, motion to approve. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Entry for harms.
Yes.
The next item would be consideration of waiving the third and final reading of that same ordinance. Counsel, how do you say?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones? Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Entry for harms.
Yes.
Next item of business is consideration of twenty AD agreement with Polk County for animal control services.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to Chad for answering my questions. Kind of made me understand this a little bit better and just kind of made me feel better about passing this.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones? Entry for harms.
Yes.
Next item, which goes along with this, is consideration of resolution twenty twenty one twenty eight, amending the city fee schedule related to the animal impound fees.
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Entry for harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty one twenty-nine, setting the public hearing for amendments to the Windsor Heights City Code, chapter fifty-five, related to the Animal Control Services. That public hearing will be the eighteenth of January twenty twenty-one.
It'll be approved. Second.
If you look at this, it says the eighteenth day of January twenty twenty at six P M. I don't know if that matters on the paperwork, but that's what it shows us.
Awesome. Thanks for the catch. I'll get it corrected.
I'm just now catching it, otherwise I would have emailed you.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Entry for harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty one thirty, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-one balance transfers for the city of Windsor Heights.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to make a note for council. This is co- uh, coincides with the last balance transfer we did. Um, Rochelle got it out a bit early, cause that one was for the interest. This one's for the bond fees. So in the future, it'll be all together. So that was just a brief explanation of that one.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call. Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Increase the harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number seven, University Avenue Improvements Project.
Go move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Entry for harms.
Yep.
Next item was council reports, committee updates. Therese.
Um, yep, you bet. So, um, public safety met on the seventeenth. Um, Chad gave us an overview of, uh, the draft budget for the coming year, uh, fiscal year twenty-two. Um, we also had a, an update on the rental code and animal control services of which we just, um, approved. And then, um, we also had a, a brief discussion as, uh, there was a request to, um, inquire about how we, um, deal with, uh, marijuana, um, legal, legalization, um, sort of thing, and we had the discussion about how to proceed with that in our community. And so it was a good, good conversation at this point in time. Um, I think until the state would take any action, it doesn't, um, progress to, to take any action at this juncture. So, um, we wrapped up our committee meetings for the year, and, uh, we'll be looking to schedule out the rest, um, our next agenda items in the new year, um, probably starting in February. So if you have any issues or items, um, that you want public safety to, uh, entertain or look or take on, please let us know. Otherwise, um, we had a, despite, uh, um, not meeting in person for a few, or not meeting in person, but not meeting, um, for a few months this year, uh, I think we had a very productive, uh, um, twenty twenty for Public Safety Committee and, um, in a very active, uh, uh, group. So thank you to all the folks that, that serve and sit on Public Safety with us and, um, for their service to our community and helping make it a little bit better. So thanks, everybody, and Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Therese. Appreciate your service on that committee.
Hey, Mayor.
You.
Right quick, before we move forward on animal services, just so everybody's aware, um, at the next meeting, I'll bring forth a twenty-eighty for A R L that we just got. I didn't realize they were gonna do that for each, uh, each community. Uh, I just got it literally in the mail today, so I couldn't get it on this agenda, but just so everybody knows that's coming, but it doesn't change anything. It's just, uh, formalization of our process for animal control.
Okay. Thanks, Chad. Mike Jones.
And thanks to the department for coming, um, out. My, my girls enjoyed, uh, having Santa drive by and see them on Saturday, so.
They did a great job with it. Thank you. Is there not a seven F?
Huh?
What's the deal with seven F?
Travis. You're muted, buddy.
I apologize. Yeah, there is a seven F. Um, so I did cha- uh, add an additional resolution onto the agenda, and this was for, um, the C E C sending the closures. So I apologize, I was working off the old agenda myself. So item seven F would be, um, extending the closures due to COVID. I don't know if Dennis has more information.
Uh, this is just extending the action that the council has taken twice already in the past to allow for, um, uh, refunds to people that have booked events at the C E C, and we're setting the date out far enough, June, uh, thirtieth, so that we can at least stand up the fiscal year if things change drastically and improve, and we start to see these events coming back in, then we'll come back to council and we'll end this a little earlier. But my guess is we'll be talking about extending again before we're talking about shutting it down early.
Thank you, Dennis.
Back in.
Just comments, or is this a, a something to vote on here?
It's, it's a formal resolution. Like, you just.
All right. So we're on. Nice transition.
You wanna roll, Mayor?
Pardon?
Roll call, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Increase the harms.
We'll go back to Mike Jones. Any comments?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mike LaFredo.
Yeah, I'd just like to wish her one a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a great new year. Keep you and your family safe, and God bless you all.
Joseph.
Nope, I think, uh, everything's been covered that I had to say. So happy holidays, everyone.
Um, on Wednesday, I had my first Metro Waste meeting. Metro Waste presented their budget to the board. It included a forty-three percent increase, which amounted to about seven hundred thousand dollars in the compost it program. The proposal at first was that Metro Waste would just include the added cost into their budget for the year. There were board members that were concerned with the increase and that Metro Waste was including that large of an increase, uh, without passing more, more than a two percent increase on to the residents. The budget did propose a two percent increase in cost for yard bags and stickers. Um, the, the first budget that we received. It was decided that staff would go back to figure out some alternative budget options. Some of the suggestions were to switch to a compost it pickup every other week to coincide with recycling programs. Um, providing an app, email, telephone number where residents could advise waste management that they had a compost it pickup. They're thinking that the reason that there was such a big increase was because the drivers have to drive all around the, the area without knowing who they're picking up, not picking up. Um, so that was one of the, the things they thought maybe we could do to decrease the costs. Um, they also were looking at sending out an R F Q to see if there was anybody else that would bid, um, to pick up the compost it program. Uh, the next meeting is when we will hear what staff came up with as alternatives. Another great program is the appliance de-manuf- de-manufacturing, which started December first. There have been over two hundred appliances de-manufactured. They also received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for a forklift. Lastly, construction at the Grime Station is going well and as planned. And thank you to the Windsor Heights Firefighters Association for making sure that Santa could have a parade through town. I've heard nothing but great things from, uh, people about it. Um, I was able to look out the window. Um, thankfully, you know, I didn't have to go outside. I don't have kids, so tha- that age. But it was nice to see them come through, nice to hear them with the, the Christmas music and waving, since it seems to be such a, a big tradition for Windsor Heights.
Susan, if I could just mention to you on the Metro Waste Authority, if in fact they're considering every other week pickup, and they're still charging the same amount for the containers, uh, that's doubling the price.
That was, I sent an email, because that really didn't come up in the process, um, through the meeting. So I sent an email that said with, you, I had the same concerns as you. Um, I said it just wouldn't be fiscally responsible on my part to go out and, and purchase a container or, you know, use the service using the container, because it would be cheaper for me to go out and purchase bags if they're doing it every other week. Um, they're also concerned about the bags, you know, if, if it's sitting outside for too long, the bottoms fall out of them. So there's some concerns about things, and if anybody has any other concerns that they would like to bring to me that I can bring back and talk to with the board, feel free to send me an email. Or if you have any suggestions on what we can do to reduce the price by, well, a lot.
Well, doubling the cost is not gonna go well with any taxpayer for the carts, because a lot of, a lot of carts are out there in the I C. And, uh, uh, I don't think that's a good move on the Metro Waste Authority's part.
A lot of the, the people were saying that they would like to move it to every other week. Uh, my suggestion in the email was if you have the containers, you can continue that every week, because that would be a set route for the people. And then if you had, you know, other, if you had the bags out, then maybe you could let, um, waste management or whoever know that the bags are there. Um, just because I would think that you would have to take off half the price of the containers if you went to every other week.
That might be a good chance for the app to use the, uh, for the bags, and then they already have a set route for the containers.
And, you know, that's kind of what I proposed in the email. Um, they were bringing back all the options back to staff to review and then to kind of figure out what they could do.
Don't keep us informed, will you please?
I definitely will.
Thank you. Dennis? You got any final comments?
The only thing I would say is that, uh, I want, in this season, I wanted to, um, express my appreciation for all of you. Last four months almost now has only shown me that you're a high-functioning, well-work, well-working council and mayor, and you get along, and everything is going great in Windsor Heights, and I'm just so happy that my wife and I made the decision to come here. So happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and, uh, we'll see you after the first.
Glad to have you here, Dennis.
Well, for those of you who are traveling, please be safe. Otherwise, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, Happy New Year, and a motion to adjourn would be appreciated.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Increase the harms.
Yes.
This will be adjourning until January eighteenth. There will not be a planned meeting on the fourth.
Good.
For all of you, have a happy holiday. Take care. I'm still alive and still kicking, so thank you all for all your comments. Out.
All right.
My name.